Welcome you tonight to our meeting for the Langley School District, number 35, regular board meeting for the Board of Education for Tuesday, April 20. As far as audio, visual recording, webcasting of a regular board meeting, those in attendance were informed that per policy number seven, regular and special meetings of the board may be streamed live, archived, and accessed online. The Board reserves at sole discretion via motion at any meeting the right to not stream live or archive a meeting or a portion of a meeting. Further, the Board reserves the right to edit any recorded portion of a meeting. I'd like to call tonight's meeting, and it's basically 7:01 PM, and begin the meeting with the introduction stating, I'd like to acknowledge that the Langley School District is located on the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Masri, Kwantlin, Kecce, and Semiamu First Nations. We gather here tonight in an understanding of the importance of Yaya Stol, Skakko Ayes, working together, and Natzamat, Latzamat, uniting ourselves with one mind, one heart, to ensure that we support and inspire all learners to reach their full potential. I'd now like to introduce everyone and welcome everyone that is here. We do have quite a few people that are in our presence online, so I'd like to acknowledge them. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge, we have a number of teachers in our room with us today. We have Katie Babuti, Naomi Hesketh, and Kaina Reisdorf. Those three teachers are going to be presenting sometime tonight. Sam Maraca is our district principal with educational planning. Dale Voe is our IT technical support. Paul Baboe, technical support specialist. Judy Swanson, our executive assistant. Joanne Abscher, communications manager. Barry Bunyan, the assistant superintendent. Shind Chan, the assistant secretary treasurer. Mal Gill, the assistant superintendent. Woody Bradford, assistant superintendent. Brian Iselli, secretary treasurer, and our superintendent Gordon Stewart. Our trustees that are here tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Charlie Fox, brand-new trustee, and then we have Marnie Wilson, Tony Ward, Suzanne Perro, Shelley Coburn, David Todd, and I'm your chairperson Rod Ross. In the audience tonight, we also have, we're very pleased, Cheryl Barnum, QP 1851 president, is with us, and Alicia Rempel, the Deep PAC president, as well as Anita Nenninger, QP 1260 member, Shelley Sondergaard, QP 1260 representative, and Tanya Kerr, the LTA president. Also with us is Jeremy Linden, the LPVPA president. Report from in-camera, I'd like to have this moment for the vice chair, David Todd, would you give us the report from in-camera, please?
Thank you. So in-camera, we discuss property and personnel.
Thank you very much. All right. The consent agenda, I'd like to have a mover for the consent agenda that the Board of Education adopts the consent agenda as provided. Kind of a mover, please? Charlie Fox, thank you, and seconded by Suzanne Perro. Very much. And now I have a vote.
Excuse me, I'd like to pull something, trustee Wilson, from the consent agenda.
Okay, what would you like to pull?
Items 4.7.1 and 4.7.2, the two administrative procedures.
Okay, and what was the purpose for that?
I'd like further discussion on them. So it usually would now just be adopted.
Amended.
Amended, voted on as amended.
Okay, so are we going to add them to the agenda then?
Yes, please.
So we'll put them under new business?
They would usually just come into the regular body of the meeting.
Yeah, so we'll put them at the end of each secretary treasurer's report. Sir, I'm getting a whole bunch of them. Okay, see if that works. Okay, all right, so we're going to put it, where did you say, Brian? 7.4 and 7.5. Okay, thank you very much. We'll do that. And now can I have all those in favor of the agenda? Consent agenda as provided. So we've had a mover and a seconder. We have pulled some items from it. Can I have a vote, please? All those in favor? Looking there, I see it's all in favor unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. And moving right along. Consideration of our regular agenda. The agenda be approved as presented. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by David Todd, seconded by Charlie Fox. Thank you very much. Todd, all right. And can I have a mover? Can I have a most, got a mover and a seconder? All those in favor, please? The agenda, thank you, and it is also unanimous. Thank you. We're now going to go to our delegation, and tonight we've got a delegation, but because of COVID, Wendy Cook, the New Westminster representative and later District Labor Council is going to be making a video presentation. And then we'll have trustee Todd is going to make some comments afterwards. So would we like to roll the presentation at this time, please? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Cook, and I am on the executive for the New West District Labor Council as the BCTS member. I'm also a delegate of the New West District Labor Council. Each year, the New West District, the New Westminster and District Labor Council presents to the city councils and school boards within our region to seek their support and recognition of April 28th as the Day of Morning for workers killed and injured on the job. Our presentations are usually designed to be informative with a theme or focus as we believe workplace health and safety is everyone's responsibility. Last year, we were able to make these presentations, we were not able to make these presentations as we all were coping with the radical changes brought to our workplaces, our communities, and our lives by the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. This year, as we mark the Second Day of Morning to take place during the pandemic, we are taking time to remember every worker killed or injured by COVID-19 in the workplace, and every worker and family impacted by the pandemic, both at work and at home. The purpose of the Day of Morning is twofold, to remember workers killed and injured on the job, and to rededicate ourselves to preventing future injuries through education. Positive change happens when we all work together. It has taken all of us wearing masks, sanitizing surfaces, isolating, and doing our part to get us through the last year, and it hasn't been easy. The pandemic has exposed the lack of protection for workers. Evidence from across the country, and indeed around the world, shows the virus is spreading at work, not only in healthcare settings, but also in factories, farmwork, and food processing, warehouses, schools, offices, transportation, and other sectors. Workers have had to fight for access to protective equipment, COVID-safe practices at work, paid sick leave, and respect for their basic health and safety rights. The impact of the pandemic on workers has taken many forms. Workers on the front line have had to adjust to new or stronger health and safety protocols, including using masks and sanitizer in the workplace, working with new ways with new barriers or equipment in place for their protection, and that of their patients, customers, coworkers, and students. There is not one job or task that has been performed in the last year that has not been changed, sometimes drastically, in some way, and the burden of adjusting to new reality, this new reality, at times under enormous pressure or stress, has fallen on workers. Less visible, but also dangerous for its long-term effects is the stress the pandemic has put on workers. Frontline workers face the stress of knowing that by going to work, they risk exposure to a deadly virus for themselves and their families. They have faced uncertainty around worldwide supply chains and availability of necessary protective personal equipment. The local transit and transportation networks they rely on to get them to and from work have also been impacted by pandemic, the pandemic. Frontline workers also face mental health injuries from the illness and loss they see daily as part of their job. Those who are able to work from home are also coping with stress, balancing work and home life. The sudden transition to working from home has meant adjusting to a lack of equipment, lack of proper spaces dedicated to work, and lack of ergonomically appropriate workstations that protect against long-term impacts from repetitive strain, eye, and other injuries. Those living alone face increased isolation, being cut off from coworkers, and those with families have had to balance workspaces and work time with family needs. Workers in industries like hospitality and tourism have been hard-hit by reductions and closures and have stress from underemployment or unemployment, struggling to pay bills and support house and feed their families through this long, difficult time. Women and workers of color have been the hardest hit by these closures and must be a priority for our recovery. Stress and uncertainty have also led to the rise in domestic and intimate partner violence. There is no doubt that there will be long-term mental health impacts from isolation, stress, and other impacts of the pandemic. This is true not only of teachers, educational assistants, staff and custodians who work in schools, but also for students and their families. That is why the labor movement is calling on employers and leaders at every level of government to learn the lessons of the pandemic and ensure we have a just, fair, and healthy recovery that addresses both short and long-term impacts. We are asking employers to do the following: work with health and safety committees and representatives to ensure safe and healthy working conditions; ensure all workers have access to free personal protective equipment, training, and paid sick leaves and sick days so they can stay home when they are ill and not risk exposing coworkers in their communities. We are also asking federal, provincial, and territorial governments to ensure every worker has seamless access to universal, permanent, and adequate paid sick leave so no one has to choose between going to work sick and getting a paycheck. Being able to stay home when you are sick is fundamental to reducing workplace exposures and illness. Enforce workplace health and safety provisions, including the right to refuse unsafe work, and deliver on the promise that workplace health and safety is recognized as a fundamental right at work at the International Labor Organization, ILO, this year. As local leaders, we ask that you join our calls and ensure senior levels of government hear your voices to ensure we all emerge from this pandemic with a healthy and safe recovery for workers, our families, and our communities. I would like to conclude by inviting you to join our Labor Council this Day of Morning for workers killed and injured on the job. On Wednesday, April 28th, at 7:00 PM on Zoom, it will be a short virtual observance. Links to the events are on the Labor Council website and our Facebook page. Everyone here today can help us make a difference, be safety-conscious, support accountability measures, and health and safety education in your workplaces. I want to thank you for listening. I want to thank you for becoming active, and I want to let you know once again, this was respectfully presented by the New West District, New West and District Labor Council, and chartered by the Canadian Labor Congress, which is affiliated to the BC Federation of Labor. Thanks again.
And thank you very much, Wendy. We very much appreciate that message. And now I'd just like to turn it over to Vice Chair David Todd. I think he has a motion he'd like to make. Go ahead, David.
Thank you. To further increase awareness of International Day of Morning for Workers Killed and Injured next week on April 28th, I move, seconded by trustee Wilson, that we observe a moment of silence. Thank you, fellow trustees.
Thank you, Chair Todd. And now I'd like to move on to 7.1, the superintendent's report. The superintendent's report, Lessons Learned From The Transition Support Model. And I know you've got a few guests that are with you tonight as well, superintendent, but I'll let you introduce them if that's all right. Joana.
Thank you, Chair Ross, and good evening, everyone, and those tuning in to all of our trustees and the rest of our staff. Yeah, this is, it's a good news, a good news item to kind of throw out right now, and I'm really pleased to do so, given all the challenges we're facing around COVID right now, and that seems to be obviously on top of everyone's mind. And as a district, we continue to do everything we can to make sure that our staff and students are safe in their learning environments. But I think that we haven't had the learning stop, and we continue to do great work around numeracy and literacy and our transition rates and social-emotional learning. And we need to take the time to make sure that we share those with you also. And when I look back to when the pandemic started, we had our frontline workers that said, "We need help." And as a district, we came up with a hub model that we were able to support people through so that they could do the great work they needed to do to support us, and yet at the same time find ways to take care of their kids during the day and continue that learning for them so they could continue to do that. And I look at, as we moved into the fall, and despite, you know, all the different things we put in place, there's some families that still, they said, "For our families, we have circumstances that we're still pretty anxious about, and we're not ready to go back to schools. We're nervous, and how can you help us?" And we had to really put our heads together on it. And this was not something that was going to be able to be managed by UConnect or the Langley Education Center. This was something bigger. And we had anywhere from 700, 800, 900 people saying to us, "We need your help." And we're very fortunate that, once again, staff rose up to the occasion under the leadership of district principal Sam Maraca, and said, "You know what?" He said, "Hey, Gord, I'm always looking for stuff to do. I've got all kinds of time on my hands." And I said, "Boy, have I got an opportunity for you, Sam. How would you like to start up a new school in a matter of a week and be able to find a way to get staff sorted out, all the logistics, and find a way to, through really a tech platform, to meet the needs of these families?" And credit to Sam, he said, "Absolutely." And so not only in terms of, you know, it takes place with so much in terms of the analytics that's supporting me in that, Langley Education Center added that, and this piece. And the first part really started with, he had to find the staff. And he's done a great job of that. They needed training. They needed resources. They needed time to be able to figure that out, and they've done that. And he needed to communicate with families in terms of, "How are we going to be able to kind of make this work for you in a blended format that maybe there's some of you can come in person? Maybe you need us to stay away? How do we kind of work through those things and go through with it?" And he did. And credit to him and credit to all of the staff that he works with, and three of them are here tonight. I'm very thankful for that because they're going to share their story. And I think it's another example of, again, Langley stepped up. We stepped up and a lot of places dismantled these programs at Christmas, many at spring break, and we said, "We'll continue right through to the summer, and we're going to offer something robust than we have." And I'm really proud of the, you know, the work that all of them have done to support it. And I think also John Hattie, a great researcher out of Australia, he said, you know, "When you're going through this pandemic, once we get through it, you're not going to want to return back to the old normal." There's a lot of things that have come out of this through unfortunate circumstances that have pushed our learning, and some things that we're going to want to continue to evolve and keep in place. And Sam was going to have a chance to not only talk about the journey with some of the staff today, but also going forward, some of the great stuff that we can also continue to maintain. So most appreciative, Sam, and I'm going to turn it over to you, and if you can introduce folks tonight and walk through the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Gord. I guess the first thing, and you can see the outline of the presentation. I do want to, I want to go fairly quickly for my part because I think the voices of the teachers here will give you a better sense of what's been accomplished in terms of the learning opportunities for students. I do want to take a moment to, there is a ton of acknowledgement here in terms of the success. I know that Gord has talked about, he's mentioned me, but really, I'm just standing here as part of a team that was able to achieve this. So I want to go through and just some acknowledgement to the team that stands beside us as we go through this journey. So one, the district leadership team, and a couple of things that come to mind, I guess. One, thank you to Gord for having that conversation, saying, "Are you looking for something to do?" And man, I didn't know what I was signing up for at the time. But I do want to thank, the one thing there, I think, was, right from the beginning, Gord talked about the autonomy to do what needs to be done to make a positive life, a positive difference in the life of children in these circumstances. So that filtered down to the leadership team. I also want to thank Woody Bradford at the time, when I was frustrated with some of the daunting tasks ahead, that he basically cleared the deck to say, "We need to get these questions answered and done." Human resources, Gord talked about hiring. Thirty-two divisions originally is what we started with. And a shout-out also to Gord, Gord, you, who did a lot of that hiring of those teachers. And just to put in context, it's in the report, basically from, I believe, September 16th till September 21st was our first staff meeting. So that was the amount of time that we took. The information technology department, again, a huge thank you just for, one, resourcing our teachers with the tools that were needed, but also to resource families who were in need, to resource. We have challenges internally, as we, as some of the IT folks in the room could probably relate to with respect to passwords of employees and trying to manage that, and now trying to manage that with, at the time, 750 students and going through this environment. So thank you to information technology, providing means for families to reach out and lean on their expertise. The instructional services team for their initial support, but also for their ongoing support. In particular, Deanna Lightbody, Shelley Hedjus, Brenda Barlow, and Amanda Slade, who worked with the teachers on a weekly basis to help with anything that teachers needed in order for this to be successful. Admin support, Karen Wright. She is the admin assistant, if you will, and has done a lot of work, in addition to her regular job, to support the program. And, you know, I think in the report, we sort of did it up until last week, but it continues to go. As sort of our COVID cases rise, the enrollment has been increasing all through, basically through the whole year. So we've had those opportunities to, and a lot of work for Karen to keep us organized and be a resource for me. I stand here with three teachers who are representing the 31 teachers that we spoke to, and I'm just fortunate to have such a dedicated group of professionals to work with and work alongside. And their willingness, and the metaphor that we used at the first staff meeting in this room, September 21st, was, "We're building the plane as we're flying it," and they've embraced that metaphor throughout because we're encountering questions and issues that we wouldn't have predicted, and it's a continual learning. And I'm very appreciative with their professionalism and their willingness to learn. And again, a huge acknowledgement to the parents because this model was set up with, this model was set up with the intent that parents needed to be partners in their child's education. And I think Katie, who is a kindergarten teacher, you can imagine kindergarten students couldn't do this without that parental support or guardianship support. So a huge thank you to the parents who have engaged in this journey with us. I'm going to start with some of the challenges just to acknowledge that we've learned some things throughout the course of the seven months. Overwhelmingly, it has been positive, but these are some of the challenges that we've encountered as we go through this. Nothing's perfect. So just so everyone's aware, the English language learners, especially with young students, that is a challenge because instead of being immersed in an English language environment for six hours of a day, they don't get that immersive experience, especially for families whose conversational language at home is not English. So they're not experiencing those that time. Parent and student engagement, it's similar to a bricks-and-mortar school. The more engaged parents are and the more engaged students are in their learning, the more successful they are. And in some cases, that hasn't been the case. So that is a challenge as well. So to sit here and say everything was perfect isn't what I'm here to do, but to share some of those challenges and lessons learned along the way. The other one, the other bullet there, one of the challenges or considerations is when we look at staffing, the amount of time that is required for a virtual environment. And it's funny, this is the first time the four of us, the three teachers that you'll meet, myself, have been in the same proximity since Christmas. And actually, the four of us haven't been in the same proximity since September. The only time we actually were in proximity was around Christmas, when I went to visit each teacher. So just to give you a sense, and we haven't been, we haven't been together as a staff in the same building ever. So those are some of the challenges that we have. And it's just, you need to be more purposeful as you go through these challenges, but also just... But also just the acknowledgement that some may perceive this work as easier because you're not in the same building. It actually adds challenges because you can't just make an announcement. You can't just go to a classroom. You have to reach out through the platform. So that being said, those are the issues or challenges that I want people to be aware of. And I really want to talk about the successes. So the slides go into the order of parents, teachers, and students. However, we're going to hear from the teachers now. And then depending on time, I will spend more or less time, depending on how much time is available. So with that being said, Katie Babuti is a kindergarten teacher. She'll be speaking first. And then Kynah Reisdorf is a grade three teacher. And then Naomi Hesskif is a grade four teacher. So they will share their experiences. Much like we're building the plane as we were flying it. I don't know what they're going to be sharing. So I'm looking forward to hearing what they have to say as well. So Katie.
All right, get set up here. Hello, everybody. My name is Katie Babuti, and I teach kindergarten virtually. No, I teach kindergarten virtually, not you, Miss Babuti. You just watch me, and I do all the talking all day long. Okay, Petunia, we've heard enough from you. You popped out of nowhere. Okay. It's so nice to see everybody. And I thank you so much for letting me be the teacher. Oh, bye, everybody. Okay, my turn. I feel our virtual teachers are modern-day superheroes. When asked what I'm teaching this year, and I tell them, well, I'm teaching kindergarten virtually, I usually receive a very puzzled look. And then followed by, how does that work? Thinking about all the wonderful things we do as educators to build connections with our students. And then to be told to do that exact same thing virtually may seem like an insurmountable task. We, as modern-day superheroes, have donned our capes, fostered our inner strength and passion for teaching, and created a vibrant, rich, unique classroom community. We are still connected. We laugh, we share, we celebrate our successes, and have built so many memories. My students did not miss out on kindergarten. They thrived, and they played, and they built strong friendships along the way. We had many guest speakers join our virtual space, dance instructors, urban safari rescue, Greater Vancouver Zoo, local authors, ventriloquists. Students had front row seats to some amazing experiences. We, as virtual teachers, took on an amazing challenge to create a community of learners and had to truly let go of our presuppositions of what a classroom should be. By letting go of what we couldn't do, we were greeted with a whole new world of possibilities and creative ways to connect with students. We unearthed a treasure of new ways to build connections and community that were never thought possible. We have strived to create magic every day for our students. We reached our screens to emotionally, reached through our screens to emotionally engage our students and bring our excitement and passion for learning into a digital space. I am so proud of my colleagues and have thoroughly enjoyed collaborating with them to make this the most magical year. I'm going to end with a quote. "When we have the courage to walk into our story and own it, we get to write the ending." Brené Brown. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Kynah Reisdorf, and I'm a grade three teacher at the Transition Model School. And thank you so much, Katie, for sharing your story. My presentation's a little different. I just really wanted to speak from the heart about my experience as a grade three teacher. And one of the concerns that I had when I started this job was that I wouldn't be able to make connections online with my students. I thought, I thought back to when the pandemic hit last year, and I was in the middle of teaching grade six. It was my first year of teaching. And some of my students just didn't want to be online. And I just felt it really hard to maintain those connections. But when I started grade three in TSM, and I just, I really was so intentional about building a connection at the beginning. And we spent months just talking about ourselves and building community and sharing and enjoying stories together. And that, those connections were in some ways stronger than in a regular classroom. I really got insight into what's going on in everyone's home. I got to see parents almost every day, either sitting beside their student or, you know, sending me emails. And just so that connection with parents and them being sort of engaged in their students' learning was just so much bigger. The other thing that I think is really positive about this model is my students were so many different levels. So I have some students in grade three who are emergent readers and writers. They're still working on those skills. And I was able to put them in a small group together with their peers that are at the same level. And we worked on the things that they needed to work on. And the other students are doing work at home that I prepared ahead of time for them to do. And so those small groups come together, and we just work on those skills for them. So this model allows teachers to really specifically work with small groups or one-on-one and give those students that would sometimes get kind of lost in, you know, in a classroom. They're kind of the quiet ones, or they're not getting the help they need. They are getting one-on-one or small group attention with the teacher. And so I've been able to see amazing growth. I mean, I had a student that was reading out loud to me just last week. And at the beginning of the year, he couldn't even tell me all his letter names. And so, I mean, and he's just so pumped. He wants to read out loud. And that amount of growth in a student in seven months is just totally incredible. So those are things that I've seen professionally. Just the benefits for students are incredible. Now, the other thing that's really cool, and Katie touched on this, is because we don't have walls in our classroom, we can do things that we could never do in a school. So I had Bring Your Pet or Bring Your Stuffed Animal to School Day for those that don't have pets. And I have one student who lives on a hobby farm, and she has a new horse. So she brought her horse to show and tell because she could do that. She livestreamed, she got her horse ready, and she was riding her horse in our Bring Your Pet to School Day. So, I mean, how amazing is that? And the other students were just thrilled with that. So I can share like tons more examples of just those types of amazing just possibilities that you would never, ever see in a bricks and mortar school. So it's been a positive experience. And, you know, Sam talked on some of the challenges. But as a new teacher, the growth that I've seen in students and the activities and things that they're able to do at home are just far beyond what I could have offered them in the classroom this year. So, yeah, it's just been an amazing, positive experience. So thank you so much for listening. And I'll turn it over to Naomi. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name's Naomi. I'm a grade four teacher this year. I'll try not to echo my colleagues too much, but I think there's some value in saying that we've all had similar successes this year so far. I'm also a first-year teacher to the district. And so I shared kind of nerves when accepting this position and thinking, I became a teacher because I wanted to build relationships. I wanted this really foundational, memorable, meaningful connection with my classroom. And going into TSM, I was nervous that that couldn't be achievable online. But I have never been proved more wrong. This year, I've had the absolute pleasure of working with up to 30 of the most resilient 10-year-olds I have ever met. Every frustration, every challenge that we've met with technology, they have met head-on. They teach me every day all the incredible things that they're capable of. And I really do love what Katie touched on in the fact that they did not miss out on school this year. They have been a part of something that's so memorable and so unique. And so I would just like to share with you some of my successes that I have noticed so far this year. The first thing with grade four is when they first started in September, they were a little bit nerved by this new program. They weren't quite sure how to use teams. They didn't know how to handle assignments. They weren't sure of the routine. The ownership for learning that I have witnessed so far this year has been absolutely mind-blowing. The students now are so responsible for their own learning. They do not need their parent support 24/7 in the same way that they did in September. And I would be really interested to see how that compares to an in-class grade four student because they've had to take that responsibility in order to be successful. There's also been a heightened sense of responsibility in terms of just keeping the class running smoothly. These students know that if they ask a question that doesn't belong in our conversation, the whole class now has to stop because I can't just talk to them on the side. So they know that they are responsible of being a part of a community that knows what conversations belong in an online classroom. It's also created incredibly independent learners. I have seen some incredible projects and some incredible initiative for students to go outside and find meaningful projects in their community to bring into class and share with us. The individualized instruction is definitely one of the strongest points of this program. I have students with incredibly high academic abilities, and I have some students that really do struggle academically. The ability to separate these students and work with them one-on-one or in small groups has been such an asset to their learning so far this year. The space in the afternoon for this one-on-one support and individual support has been incredibly beneficial, especially for my students with designations. I actually recently had a student return to my classroom, who was with me until December, return to online school, and has recently come back into TSM because she thrives so much in this model that this is how she wanted to continue her year. I also find that a lot of stress has been eliminated for these students. They don't have a social pressure to need to feel like they need to skip ahead or stay behind. My students who are really high achieving don't feel like they have to sit in a regular lesson sometimes and relearn things over and over again because they can be challenged. Likewise, my students who do need the extra help don't feel all the societal pressure to just let go and just accept that they can't do it. I find that they're more determined to succeed because they know that that support is readily available to them. On the factor of less stress for students, the security of a safe environment allows these students to succeed. They know that they are supported in a way that they would be in a classroom from the safety of their own homes. Additionally, apparent feedback that I found really interesting is that there's actually less social pressure on these students, especially those that have anxiety around going to school. They're not scared of fitting in. There's been less reports of bullying, in my classroom I'm speaking for. And the students have really created a really strong bond because this is the connection that they have. They have this bond with each other. They are their own community, and they have created such a wonderful space in our online room. We have a great class community, which has caused heavy engagement. Engagement from the very beginning has been my number one goal in my classroom. And I know that if the students buy into this, then this job will be easy for us because they want to come to class. They want to spend their time with us. They want to be doing the learning. So that has definitely been my number one priority since the beginning. As Katie and Kynah said, we can do engaging activities. On Friday, we're learning fractions right now, and we made fraction cookies where they were each in their kitchen. They were baking cookies. They were doing sandwiches. They were making pizza. And they were showing us the fraction. And they were so excited by this activity. At the end, someone said, oh, Miss H, this doesn't even feel like school. It's so fun. But the learning that happened there is going to stay with them. And that's also the parent feedback that I have received. As I've mentioned, I'm a first-year teacher, and coming into this position was quite intimidating. And as Sam said, we were flying the plane as we were going, or sorry, we were building the plane as we were flying it. But our kids were none the wiser. Our kids saw us as strong, capable, and people with a plan. And they knew that they were supported and cared for and prioritized in the same way that they would have been in school. Moving forward, as a first-year teacher with this district, I believe that this was an invaluable opportunity for any teacher in terms of professional development. I have been able to work on time management. Organization has to be up here because we plan things so far ahead. And we also have been proved that we have to be flexible. Flexibility is key, whether we're dealing with problems with technology or whether it comes to flexibility of going outside, bringing in different guest speakers. It's really been a wonderful experience. So I cannot say enough for, in terms of the growth in both the students and our class community, as well as our professionals. So thank you so much, everyone.
So again, thank you. Hopefully, the enthusiasm for teaching and learning came through. If it didn't, then you might need a coffee or something to wake you up here. So I just want to say, this is a sample of the professionals that I get to work with. I'm going to say on a daily basis, but there's a lot of independence and autonomy in the work they do because we don't get to spend the time together. So again, thank you for that. I do want to talk about, so the next part, just through some of the successes, I'm going to go through and I'm going to highlight a couple of the quotes. We've surveyed parents, students, and teachers. And then if Gord wants to make those results available, so you can see that I'm not just cherry picking the results, these themes. I've tried to select quotes that actually were themes and going through. And I appreciate what Naomi has said also about, one of the challenges is students with diverse abilities. We didn't know how they would perform in this environment. And I think the parent unsolicited and the student feedback will speak to these examples here as we go through. So I'm just going to, you can see the question there. What part of the TSM model is allowing your child to be successful in their learning? And just going through some of these, I guess I do need my glasses back on because it's a little farther for reading. But, and I'll just pick a selection. You'll be able to read all of these. I believe the PowerPoint will be available. So if you want to spend more time going through each of those. He's able to spend as much time as he needs on his assignments and has been surprisingly swift on getting things done. He's starting to take responsibility for his own organizing and has been getting assignments done on time. Sixth grade. Everything, we love it and are so grateful. He's thriving, and we feel safe. First grade. The first bullet there, we find this works well with his ADHD and his need to have one-on-one focus with the ability wiggle and move without disturbing other classrooms. First grade. The last bullet on the, like, I'm sorry, I don't want to spend reading all the bullets, but just want to highlight, M loves to be comfortable. He has SPD. And I think that having the ability to remain at home in his PJs and with a blanket encourages him to focus and get more work done. I don't think that was Gord Stewart as the quote. The last bullet on this page, "Increased confidence for a child who's very intelligent, curious, and a critical thinker, but whose fine motor output and literary skills are slower, do not, slash, do not come easy, is no longer comparing himself to his classmates, surmising that he is, in quotation marks, stupid." Through compassion, a month into TSM, after making a few significant milestones, said to us that he didn't feel stupid anymore. He had no idea he was feeling this way. So again, this is a parent. So if you're thinking of, in that parent lens, and that's what you want for your children. The TSM model gives us more exposure to N's day-to-day activities. We get to see what he's doing real time and can help him if he's struggling with something as it comes up. Sixth grade. And again, you think of the work that we do around communicating student learning and how do we allow parents inside the black box of a classroom? There's probably no better model in the province around that because they're there beside their children going through this. The long quote there with, from one perspective, from the fourth grade. "My daughter's reading and math skills have gone up exponentially." I could go on. Just the last bullet from there. "My daughter, who has ADHD, can do her works standing or wiggling without distracting the rest of the class." In part, it's the ability to take longer or shorter, as Naomi talked about. The majority of it is the teacher. I can honestly say that I would be happy if he taught L until grade 12. I cannot commend him enough. His dedication... His dedication and love for his jobs shines every day. He is building confidence and new friendships. She has started talking, fourth-grade student. So the one thing, and this is a story that resonated with me. There was a student, and it may be this student, but the ability to use chat has allowed students to find their voice where they may not have had their voice literally. And I guess the other part is this notion of you look at possibilities when you don't see the disabilities. And this is part of what this model allows. Students, and we'll just go through, sorry, I get emotional with some of these heartfelt responses. I like what we can go to school without actually going to school. And some of the comments in summary of the, I want to find the one that says about late. And I think it's that one, the bullet on the right side. What I really like about TSM is that it's almost impossible to be late. When I was in grade two and three, I used to be late like 10 times a year. Now I just wake up and brush my hair. Then I usually eat breakfast in class. So you can't really be late unless you sleep in really late. But I don't think that would happen. Another good thing about not being late in TSM is that you could wear any clothes you like since no one will see what you wear. I could wear any clothes I want. And if you just throw on any outfit, you won't have to be late picking one out. That's what I like most about TSM, not being late. So I think that person doesn't like to be late. Just the second bullet, I like being able to wake up and just get ready as opposed to getting up and having to do the walk and the ride and that. But what I like about TSM, and I believe Naomi spoke about this as well, is I don't have to deal with bullies. I love having the best teacher ever and I get to do school in my PJs. Oh, what I like most about TSM is I feel like I can learn better without other kids being loud or running around the class. I feel like it is easier to learn with a smaller class and easier to understand what the teacher is teaching us, fifth grade. Just a comment on that, the classes are, we've followed the same guidelines as the regular class size limits. So it may feel like to them that it's a smaller class, but it's the same size class as other classes. The last bullet on this page, "My teacher explains everything to me and if I need help, he is always available to help me." And then from a parent's point, "My son is thriving in this type of learning. He is actually loving school and doing his schoolwork is fun." Best, all caps, thing to happen to him is his teacher this year, sixth grade. And then, sorry, I just, there was a slide that I did want, there was a bullet that spoke to, there was a bullet that spoke to a couple of teachers from another district. I'll just summarize it. You can find it in these slides. Basically spoke to, they've done their work in other districts and by far Langley's model is the best ever. And they're working as helping teachers in other districts. So that was a testament. It's in those bullets there. I thought it was near the end. So and then the teachers, I will just, you've heard from three teachers. I want to highlight just conscious of time is, I had one that I wanted to pick on, but here, the bullet here, "Supportive environment for some students with learning exceptionalities. Students are easily overwhelmed in group situations, suffer from anxiety, struggle with sensory overload or have chronic health issues, are well-served in this model because it allows them more control of their classroom atmosphere. If they need a break or are feeling overwhelmed, they can easily signal to their teacher by turning their camera off. If things get too chaotic, they can turn the volume down. If they feel overwhelmed in large groups, they can attend school from the comfort of their own home in an environment that is familiar, calm and supportive." The other one that, again, hasn't shown up in these comments, but it was a story a teacher shared with me. And it gives, when we think of possibilities, it was a student with Tourette's and they have the ability to turn off their camera, turn off their volume and they don't create a spectacle for the rest of their classmates to see and for them to have that stigma that's attached to those situations. So those are some of the examples. I'm going to just go through some considerations for the future. And this is from my perspective. This hasn't been censored by anybody. So this is just from mine. One, I think if we think of the possibilities, and I think the teachers can attest to, this was the first question that was asked. Maybe not the first question, but the first question once we started running is, what are the possibilities that this model allows us to do if we don't have walls to be bound by? So I think that this is an opportunity to look at it as a model of choice. For some families and for some students, this is a choice that makes sense for them. It isn't for everyone, but the brilliant work that the teachers in this model have done to create community, the comments from the students have been overwhelming, the feeling like they're going to school. So that life experience is unique. And somebody mentioned they're going to have this with them all the time and they didn't miss out on school. And that's an important thing. I think the other one is just the changing paradigm. We often hear in leadership why we can't do things. And this was an example, if we had talked about this two years ago and somebody came up here and talked to the board about saying, "Hey, let's think about doing a completely online school." We know all the questions and concerns and everything that would have been brought up. But we've really, through this model, been able to leverage modern tools. And these modern tools allow us to further our capabilities to be beyond the classroom. And that's exciting as we look at this, I believe personally, this is my personal opinion. And talking to friends who have students in university who've gone through similar experiences, the future of education is a hybrid. I don't believe that it's truly bricks and mortar and I don't know that it's truly online. But how do we leverage these opportunities and the experiences that these students K. to eight will have gained? And what does next year look like for them, given that sometimes they may be, they may feel like they're now shackled into that four walls as well. So and I would just leave with this one quote, which is that necessity is the mother of all invention. And this came out of a necessity. The whole team that I've mentioned here has created and invented something that, as Gord talked about, what do we want to learn and keep from the experiences that we've done over these seven months? So at this point, I believe Chair Ross, if there are questions, any one of us are here to answer them. So thank you for your time and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. I know trustees have got questions and I just want to thank you for being the modern-day superheroes. What a great line. And for just, really we have raving fans of our school district with respect to this program. This is just amazing, satisfied customers. So first question is from David Todd and then Suzanne Perro and Shelley Coburn in that order. And because of time, we're just going to let you guys go one to the next to the next. Go ahead, David Todd.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, it's so wild because what you just said at the end, as soon as I heard you guys talking, I talked about, I looked it up and it was Plato's thinking that was turned into the English proverb that said necessity is the mother of invention. And the whole time through your report, that's what I was just thinking, like, never underestimate the power of passionate and caring educators to find a way to connect and build relationships with students. Like, this is just, this is phenomenal. Like, you've found a way, an alternative way, something that's been done very limited to celebrate students and their successes in their homes. I was so refreshed by the term of a safe space because oftentimes we've never considered it. But your teachers, your educators were creating a safe space for kids with all kinds of things. And I love the paradigm shift. Problems, possibilities. Like, I just, I'm so excited. This is one of the reasons why I chose to retire last year was I do not have a Zoom or a team's face. But I am so, so impressed with this. Like, the one question I have for you, how do we water this? How do we make it grow? Thank you.
From, again, from my perspective is to think of this as possibilities to, you know, this was a program that was meant to go and designed originally till December, the end of December. And the success of the model, I think there are a number of things that we've learned and think of the possibilities. Technology is in our hands every day that allows us to do this type of learning and having people who are willing to learn and take the risks. Every one of the teachers here, I was reflecting on the growth from September 25 staff meeting. The three presentations that you saw today, probably on September 2026, would have looked completely different and said, "These people are crazy. What are you asking us to do?" So I think it's just trusting people to find ways to solve problems and seeing possibilities. Hopefully that answers it. And that's from my perspective.
Go ahead, Suzanne.
Thank you, Chair Ross. Thank you, Katie, Ken and Naomi. Such amazing presentations and love hearing what's going on. Such creativity and seeking different ways to connect. With all four of you, the main theme I'm hearing is we're reducing stressors through this type of learning. And when we learn, reduce those stressors, our kids have an opportunity to move out of that fight-flight-freeze and engage in what feels like safe engagement for learning. Because before we can get a child's mind or anybody's mind, we have to have their hearts. And so this kind of learning, as a parent who has homeschooled, unschooled, brick and mortar, public, I've done all of it. I know the importance of every one of those avenues and how it impacts our students' learning approaches. And for some of our kiddos with developmental disabilities especially, I want to encourage us to keep looking at this and making sure we're focusing on the appropriateness of language as we're doing this journey and supporting our children through appropriate, healthy language. I know our intentions are good and I know our intentions are to seek safe communities, but just making sure that our language is appropriate when we're describing their diagnoses and how they interface with it is critical to build teams and to make sure children are being viewed appropriately as it interfaces with their diagnosis so that they feel safe and welcome and able to participate in their communities. Outside of that, I love the letting go of presupposition. Really what it does is it allows us to focus on relationship and that supports learning. And you guys have done a fabulous job doing that and you showed that very well in your presentation. So I extend my appreciation. Thanks for that.
Thank you, Suzanne Perro, and now trustee Shelley Coburn.
Thank you, Chair. And so we'll start with you, Mr. Maraca. Thank you so much. Really a pleasure to see your enthusiasm for something that many people wouldn't even take on. I recognize the very difficult work that you and your team have done and I really appreciate it. So I'm going to then direct my question to the superintendent because he can probably already guess where my question is headed and it's probably one for the superintendent to field. Is that okay with everyone? Well, you can, you know what? You can take a stab at it, but you'll want to leave. I guarantee it. So here's my question. And Gord, you chime in or superintendent when you think it's necessary. So something was said and it said, you know, this is a choice that makes sense. And I'm already critical of choice programming, but this I see outside of a choice programming context because I think that there is, there was a driver under this more than just a choice of programming to meet your child's educational need, but a choice to feel safe and a choice to feel like your child was safe. And what I think I see here, in addition to all the great work, is a type of inequity specifically around access and opportunity. Here's Gord. Okay. What I noticed came up a lot, Mr. Superintendent, is the parent. And the parent is extremely integral to the success. And we know that this type of parental capital is often associated with a particular socioeconomic situation. And so many of the families who don't want to be sending their kids to school, but they don't have the choice because it would require access to excellent technology and good internet. I heard over there around their children. Then I heard for the English language learner who's at home with their parent that their parents aren't immersed in the language. So I can see so many gaps. And so I am surprised to hear we have this many people in this wonderful little transition school, transition model. But to be honest, there's a particular type of inequity here. And I'm just wondering if we were to expand this program or if more people needed it, how would we support these already vulnerable, right? Because they often don't have a parent at home. They don't have the same kind of access. Choice program often depends on, even in a virtual school, parental engagement. So if we're going to move towards us as an in-between space, how do we increase the accessibility to a particular group of people who may be not wanting to send their kids to school, but at this point have no choice just because of what is entailed in it? So again, not to take away from the success these kids are having. It's not pie. They can all enjoy success. How do we broaden this so more families and more children can feel this kind of success? Because again, it was the ADD kids. It was the A. So it's a lot of kids who don't really do well in school already. So how do we engage or expand this to make sure that there's a little more equity of access and opportunity? Take it away, Superintendent.
Thank you, trustee Coburn, as always. And let me, I'll take a stab at it. In terms of the equity piece, it was offered to everyone and certainly if they didn't have technology, we provided it. But yeah, I can't speak to internet, you know, it's the support at home. I can't speak to the parents that, hey, I can't be at home. And certainly Sam Maraca drew on that at the start to say there are challenges with this. But even given that, I'm not looking at opening another choice school. In fact, when the parents chose this model, what they told us is, "We don't want to lose our spot in our catchment." We don't, don't cut us loose here. We're not leaving Alex Hope. We're not leaving, we want to stay connected. We just can't go there right now, but we do want to go get back. So my thoughts, and again, speaking from the cuff because I'm always someone looking for, you know, some interesting ways of pondering what we can do. I think Sam's really touched on it. Do you have to be all in? Can we not have some kind of blended option at any site? I don't know. We've got these trained people, right, in this room and others that have these skills. Does it have to be all or nothing? And my lesson would be, shouldn't be. They have the same number of kids as anyone else, so there's not a financial cost. And it may, to your point, be able to, if that's something that's a And it may, to your point, be able to, if that's something that's available, I think these are skills that can rub off on all teachers. There's some things we can do differently. Uh, to reach kids, uh, that don't require that they're five days a week, if they're not at that point. But they are attached to community. They don't wanna leave Douglas Park. They don't wanna leave Nickelback. They don't wanna leave, you know, Topo. Good, there's so much value in community. So I think that puts that additional pressure on us. If you want choice, I've got you connect. I've got LDC. I've got those for you. But I think these are parents of this group are saying, no, that's not necessarily, maybe. But could you not make this a reality maybe at my child's home site? And that might be the pressure for us as a staff to consider and. Bring it on because we should always be trying to think of new ways of doing things. So, but thank you for that question. It's a good question.
Thank you, um, very much, Superintendent. You are like a cat and you got nine left, buddy.
Like a cat.
On your feet.
And thank you very much. I'd like to thank all our presenters tonight, especially our teachers that come up. Thank you. You've had a full day, I know, and so we're very grateful. And it, it just amazes that you've created community online because that is, you know, just world-class. So. Good on you guys. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Uh, I need a mover and a seconder for tonight's superintendent's report, the lessons learned from the transition models. Can I have a mover? Charlie Fox, seconded by Tony Ward. And then I need to have a vote on that. All those in favor, please. I can see those hands. And it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to seven point two, we have the district calendars, two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-three to twenty-four. And I understand that, uh, Mr. Barry Bunyan, the HR department will be speaking on behalf. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Ross. Uh, okay, so tonight we have two different, uh, calendar presentations to make and two different motions for the board to consider. Um, if the board remembers back to our February meeting. Uh, we brought forward some district calendars, uh, for boards to approve a consultation. Uh, that consultation process has been completed now, and so they're being brought forward for approval. Uh, before I talk a little bit about that process, I'll just remind trustees. That, um, we've changed our district calendar approval process slightly from what we've done before. What we used to do. Is we used to approve three years of district calendars and then at the end of the third year, approve another three years of district calendars. Uh, that was causing a little bit of anxiety, particularly amongst our parents, because at the end of the third year, they didn't know what the next year district counted. So for planning and, and when spring break was and things like that, that was causing some problems. So what we're doing now. Is, um, we are bringing forward two years worth of district calendars, kind of a year ahead. So there'll always be another calendar for parents to look at. Of the next year, when we bring forward proposed district calendars. So that kind of problem hopefully will solve itself. So that's why we're doing these two years. Now, um, again, a reminder of what the difference is between a district calendar. And a school yearly calendar. The district calendar, and I do have a sample to show you in my presentation in a couple of slides. Uh, the district calendar is simply the one that designates how many instructional days there are in a year, how many. Vacation days are in a year, how many stat holidays there are in a year, and how many non-instructional days are in the year. It does not have detailed granular, um, information on it about when the parent teacher nights are or when the report cards are released. Those, that kind of level of detail is for the yearly school calendars, which is the second process. So I know that's a lot of talk about calendars. Hopefully I've, uh, not confused anybody by that. So let's get started. So, uh, cal- uh, first thing is, uh, calendar compliance. So there is ministry, uh, calendar regulations that guide all school districts on their compliance. Um, all proposed school calendars are, are reviewed to make sure they aren't compliant. What's key for us in this is that we must, over the course of the year. Meet the hours of instruction. And there they are on the, uh, on the slide for you. Uh, it's eight hundred forty-eight hours at kindergarten. Elementary grades one to seven is eight seventy-three and grade eight to twelve is nine forty-seven. So that's hours of instruction total. Over the course of the year. That's not hours of instruction per course or, or something like that. That's total. So our calendars have to meet that. And they also have to meet a number of, um, particularly the teacher's collective agreement language that has specific detail on. When school can start, when it can end, when spring break happens and things like that. So that's all brought together. Um. And again, we brought this forward in February. So just a reminder of what it looks like. There are two calendars. I've only got one in front of you. This is for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. It's color-coded and there is a, a legend at the bottom. But basically yellow is vacation, which is why the top two months, July and August are all mostly yellow. Um, per, the sort of purple color, bluish purple color, that's instructional days. That's when students are in session. The green are holidays, stat holidays, Labor Day, Remembrance Day, uh, Good Friday, that kind of thing. And the red, and there are seven of them, are the non-instructional days. Some of which are pro D days, some of which is our design and assessment days. The, um, the red days do sometimes vary a bit year to year. But we put them in where they typically tend to be or around where they tend to be for the district calendars, just so parents are aware of where they are. In the consultation, a number of things took place from the February meeting until now. We are required to have a consultation by the calendar regulation in the ministry. Uh, we did hold meetings with all our employee groups, uh, the LTA, QP twelve sixty, eighteen fifty-one and our administrative and management teams. Just to get feedback from them. We placed information on our district website with a link to the proposed calendars. It went out on social media. There were a number of reminders and there was a email, um, address put out for people to give feedback. We did receive feedback from the public. We always do. But to be fair, we don't get a lot. Uh, I think we had twelve emails. Um, and the emails all tend to. Say the same kind of thing. A lot of it is, you know, please put the non-instructional pro D days on long holiday weekends. We actually do that in a, a number of cases. Um, there's a number of them that want either winter break or spring break to be changed. Which is unfortunately not possible because those times have, uh, restrictions on them based on collective agreement language. So. We do take the consultation. We do consider, um, you know, what people say. Sometimes we just can't do what everyone's asking. Uh, so that's now happened. And then, um, I'm bringing them forward to you now today after the consultation. Um, there have not been any changes from the February meeting because none of the information we had, um, prompted us to make any changes. And that would not be unusual with the district calendar. You can't change a stat holiday. You know, you can't change certain things. So. Um, that was the process we went through. That meets the calendar regulation. And the motion that I am suggesting to the board is in front of you and I'll turn it to, over to Chair Ross.
And thank you very much. I have one question from the board and I'd like to thank you. Your presentation's very enthusiastic. If you could make calendars exciting, you've done it. So go ahead, David Todd.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Barry Bunyan. Um, I, I appreciate this and, and I did note that one of the questions was around the Fridays and, and that, and not to get too granular or whatever. I do know that other districts, uh, have kind of experimented a little bit with it and, um. Parents do seem to, uh, like having that extra day around May long weekend. I know it's done sometimes and, um. Uh, sometimes Thanksgiving or Remembrance Day. I, I'm not saying they always line up. But, um, it's certainly something to consider and, um, you know, if, if it makes sense. So that was my one question. You said that we have it. I, I think I read it over and I think there's at least two weekends that I've done that. But then I saw one of our days put on a Monday to. Uh, on a different location. So maybe you wanna respond to this? Just something to think about for next year?
Yeah, and, uh, thank you for your question, uh, trustee Todd. Uh, yeah, so we have actually accommodated a few of the non-instructional days on long weekends. You'll see that in the upcoming detailed calendars that are coming forward. Um, and we always do look to do that. Um, unfortunately, sometimes it doesn't work because. Uh, particularly with design and assessment report card prep days. Because we have to time those to meet the, the needs of the reporting that's happening at the schools. So. It's really, we time that to make sure that the teachers have that report card prep time at the right time for them to be able to get report cards ready. And sometimes that works out and sometimes it doesn't. But yes, we do make that, um, determination. Thank you for your question.
And thank you very much. Just a reminder to everyone, the clock is ticking. It's eight eighteen and we have trustee Wilson. Go ahead. Oh, you're just, your question. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to call the question then on this one. Uh, first of all, pardon me, I need a mover that, uh, the Board of Education approves the district calendars for the school years. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four as presented. Uh, can I have a mover for that? Trustee David Todd, seconded by Shelley Coburn. Thank you. And all those in favor, please? And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to move on to the next calendar. Uh, this is the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Go ahead, Mr. Bunyan.
Thank you very much, um, uh, Chair Ross. So again, as I alluded in my previous presentation, uh, this presentation is for the. Uh, particular calendars for next year. So these are the calendars that will have the detail on it about. Report card, uh, prep time, design and assessment, um, parent teacher conference dates. Uh, oh gosh, and, and, uh, we're sorry, report card, um, distribution, things like that. Um, now in our district, uh, we, we have worked hard over the years to try to. You know, harmonize and bring together a, a smaller group of calendars. There was a time in the district many years ago where. It seemed like almost every high school and every elementary school or groups of elementary schools had their own calendars. And it does cause significant, um, concern, especially amongst parents, because parents often have children in different schools and. And, uh, things aren't lining up really well. So as per the feedback in the district calendar processes we've had in the past. Many of the parents have said to us, you know, we would really like to look to aligning things as much as possible. And that helps with them. That helps in their community and we've certainly gone a long way with that. So there are a number of calendars that are put forward to you. It, I think there's seven of them, which seems like a lot. But of the seven, five are, are from our choice schools, which have unique programs. Um, Fine Arts is K to twelve, Fundamental Middle Secondary is six to twelve. Um, we have a number of different. Unique situations that actually call for calendars that are a little bit unique. Um, however, most of the schools in the district will fall on one of the two calendars. The one is the Elementary-Middle. Which all of our elementary schools and middle schools will follow. And the other one is Secondary-Semester. Last year, or this year, but last year when you were approving it, uh, we had an Alder Grove Regional Calendar. You will notice that's not in your package today because the elementary schools, uh, Short Read and Parkside and Betty Gilbert. Middle School, um, over the years, their dates have all kind of lined up already with the Elementary-Middle District Calendar. And they actually said to us, look, you know. And, and Alder Grove Secondary as well. They actually said, look, we, we line up with everybody anyways. So there's really not a need for our own separate one. So that's why that's not there. They'll be captured in those other two. The other calendar that you've seen in the past that you don't see this year is a linear secondary calendar. Um, all of our, um, high schools are going to a semester system for next year. So the linear calendar is not needed. None of our schools will be following a linear timetable. Okay, so I'll follow up, go through. Again, we work with schools, um, to develop the calendars. Information goes out to schools, um, principals and administrative teams talk to their staff. And we gather all that feedback. We are again, having another two-week spring break, which is something we've had for many, many years and. Are having next year and, and are looking to have in the future. And input has been gathered through meetings and also we meet with the LTA executive representatives to talk about input as well. The two-week spring break, like I say, goes back many years. Um. Re- usually typically you would have a one-week spring break in a traditional calendar. I guess we could probably call two-week spring break almost traditional right now. But, um, when we moved to two-week spring break, we had to recapture the time for the five days that. We're adding to spring break by adding time to all the rest of the days in the year. And that works out to about nine minutes a day. Again, I'll remind trustees that we do have to meet the instructional hours over the year. So we can't just lose time. We have to make sure we've had it. Uh, we apply, um, the extra week to spring break to make it two weeks. Um, the additional week at spring break only affects instructional time at the school. So school board office staff, maintenance staff, IT staff and other twelve-month employees aren't really affected by this. Just like they're not affected by summer break or winter break. They're twelve-month employees. They work all the time and they have their vacations that they take at different times. Uh, we do have agreements with, uh, QP twelve sixty. QP twelve sixty is our school-based support staff. Um, that are, are, are not twelve months employees typically. They're, they're, um, uh, they're ten-month employees. And losing a week of spring break for them, um, affects their, um, their income. So for many years now, we've had a series of, um. Of agreements with, uh, QP twelve sixty that has allowed everybody to recapture. And to, to not lose the, uh, five days of, of pay. Uh, and have ways to do that. It's worked extremely well over the years and we will look forward to doing it again for next year. So just a reminder that for next year, there will be a hundred and eighty-six days in the school calendar. Again, the days and how many you have will vary because. The start of school and the end of school vary. Sometimes the start of school is on, uh, September second. Sometimes it's on September eighth, cause it's always the day after Labor Day. Sometimes in June, the last day, um, could be the twenty-fourth, or it could be the twenty-eighth, or it could be the thirtieth. So it's gonna vary. This year between the bookends, there's a hundred and eighty-six days when you take out all the staffs and all the holidays. A hundred and seventy-nine of them are instruction when students are expected to be in session. Seven are non-instructional and they're the typical non-instructional. Three pro D days, the administrative day in June. Two report card, design and assessment days and a school improvement day, which for next year is scheduled for September twenty-fourth. And it typically is as in September. Just a couple of things to note. If you're looking at the Elementary-Middle Calendar, uh, you may note that, uh, RC Garnet has a different pro D day in, in May. Than the rest of the district. And that's because, um, RC Garnet is our demonstration school. And they, um, put on a lot of activities and demonstrate activities and demonstrate learning during the pro D day that the rest of the district gets. So they have a different day to compensate them, uh, for that time. And the Langley Education Center again is a, a calendar that's pretty unique. The Langley Education Center, uh, principal Sam Maraca just spoke, uh, about our, uh, TSM model. But the Langley Education Center is based on a four-day week. They have a unique calendar. So their timetable is quite different looking and their days are quite unique. Uh, mostly because of that. Although for next year, there's no significant changes from this year. The calendars in your package and for the public to see, but also for you to have are Elementary-Middle. Uh, Secondary-Semester and then a specific one for Fine Arts School, specific for Fundamental Middle Secondary. Specific Langley Education Center, a specific for Simon's U-Connect. And Vanguard Secondary next year, which usually goes on the secondary, um, calendar. They're gonna do a unique calendar that's next year. They have this year, as all high schools did, to do our cohorts and our guidelines move to a quarter system, which they find. Works very, very well, uh, for their system and how they, how they support their students. And so the staff and the principal and the administration have, um, asked for us to continue the quarter system at that school. Um, which is why there's a separate calendar for them. Okay, again, I know no one can read this and I'm not expecting you to read it. This is simply one of the calendars. Um, and I own, I only put it up there just to show you that there is a different, it looks quite different than the district calendar. Cause we're not just looking at instructional days and things. We're actually looking at where everything is. And so you can see when all the different days are in October, November, December, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Of course, as we do with district calendars, we must be compliant with the school calendar regulation and we, there are check to be compliant. And specifically over the course of the year from all of the instructional days, we'll add up to a minimum of. Eight hundred forty-eight hours, eight hundred, uh, for kindergarten, eight seventy-three for one to seven, nine forty-seven for eight to twelve. So that is the process. Um, we bring it forward to the board in April because we want. To, um, send it out to our communities in, in early May. So that parents have an understanding of what next year's calendar look like. People do like to plan. Staff needs to know this as well. And so it's brought forward, uh, because the calendar regulation requires us to bring it forward at a certain time. So for people to be able to see it, which is why it's coming to you today. And again, there is a recommended board motion and I will now end that and turn it back to Chair Ross.
And thank you very much. I see that there's no questions in the chat, so we'll go right to. If you could put it in the chat, it just, it's easier for me to read, uh, rather than look at the little pictures at the bottom. So thank you, uh, David Todd, if you'd like to speak.
I'm just gonna move it. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, you, oh, you're just moving. Okay, David Todd moved it and seconded by Charlie Fox. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And the, the Board of Education approves the school calendars for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year as presented. All those in favor, please. Raise your hand. And it is passed. Thank you very much. Unanimously. Okay, we're going to seven point four. We've got some new things that have been added on. So, um. The first one is seven point four is gonna be anti-harassment. So, um, I understand Marnie Wilson, trustee Wilson, you wanted to bring this up. So, uh. It's, uh, over to you.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, I just noticed when I was going through the consent agenda earlier that our. that our administrative procedures had moved into the consent items. So I have just a couple of comments first, I guess. One thing I noted was, I think it would be helpful if we included a way of signifying what the changes are when we make changes, just so that you don't have to get out the old thing and try to compare where things are. So even if it's just italicized, or bolded, or strikeout, that would be helpful in the future. And secondly, I believe these items may have been placed in the consent agenda in error. I'm not sure. And would like the board to have further discussion. Doesn't need to be here now, but I think we need discussion on where the admin procedures should be placed in the agenda or how we are going about hearing about them. So those are my comments.
Okay, was that for both the items? You had the emergency one as well, that was as well, okay.
Yes.
Superintendent, do you want to comment on this? Or, okay, thank you.
Well, thanks for the questions, Trustee Wilson. So no, the tracking changes, that's not a problem. We can do that going forward, for sure. Make it easier for you and the public. In terms of going on the consent agenda, it's not something... My understanding, as a worker myself, it's not like the policy committee or policy where it determines something that comes out to the public for the conversation and pass. So certainly, in terms of trustees having questions around it, absolutely welcome those. But that was my understanding of why we placed it where it is. So if we got that wrong, then I guess that's going to be up for further conversation.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that handles the question, doesn't it, Marnie Wilson? Do you have any comments? Does that get to the crux of your concern?
Sort of, as long as we're going to discuss it as a board further. But I think Trustee Coburn also had a comment, maybe.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Trustee Coburn.
Great, thank you, Chair Ross. Where are you? Oh, there you are. So yeah, I do think I wasn't under the impression that they were going to come in in the consent agenda. I don't know if that's the appropriate format for them. I don't necessarily know if the board needs to have a full discussion on it. But I do think that having it presented to us... I thought we were going to have it presented to us just so that for information, and we would receive it, and then it would appear in the consent agenda. I suspect is how it's supposed to go. But if they're not coming by us first, they shouldn't really be hitting that consent agenda. So perhaps adding it to like a committee of the whole, not for us to micromanage. But I was, again, under the impression that they were going to come by us, and they were going to hit the public, and that we would be able to see those changes. So I think it's just a very simple miscommunication on... There's just so much going on. But going forward, it would be really useful if we could see that and then see it in the consent agenda. Thank you.
And I think that's welcome. So I'll make sure that I have a discussion with the superintendent. We'll see what we can do. Thank you very much. And thank you, Trustee Wilson, for bringing that to our attention tonight. I don't think we need a mover for this... Just receiving it for information? Okay, we're just receiving it for information, okay. I'd like to get on to the number eight, which is the Secretary Treasurer's report, the annual facilities grant for 2020 and 2021. So this Secretary Treasurer, Ryan Zelli, this is up to you now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Ross. I just wanted to provide a little information on the annual facilities grant. Sorry, the slide that's up here is for the next section. So for the annual facilities grant, there is no PowerPoint. Just a brief update. Every year, we bring to you for your approval the plan for the annual facilities grant that has been developed by maintenance that covers off the minor repairs of the district. This year, it's slightly different with the delay of the provincial budget. They basically have provided us with preliminary funding for the annual facilities grant, but still wanted to bring that here for you to approve because staff need to be proceeding to getting a lot of the work done during the summer. I mean, the procurement has actually already started on some things pending funding. But when the funding does come, if it is substantial change to this, we will bring it back to you. If it's minor, we will obviously just tweak the plan to make it fit, which is my assumption at this point, that it will be minor. The annual facility grant has been in this amount for the last number of years, so it should be fairly representative. For us, it's just over $3.3 million. Out of that, we do have to pay the capital asset management system, known as CAMS. Every promise does, they pay their share. Our share is $50,661. So with that, I will turn it back to Chair Ross.
And thank you very much. So the Board of Education approves the annual facilities grant 2021-2022 spending plan as presented. I need a mover for this, please, and then we'll have a secondary as well. So moved by David Todd, seconded by Shelley Coburn. Thank you very much. And then all those in favor? Thank you very much. And it passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to your presentation, the capital response letter, phase one. This is also yours, Secretary Treasurer. Go ahead, sir.
Correct. Just wanted to provide you an update on the capital response letter, which has also been impacted by the fact that the budget was later this year due to the election, which was just announced today, which I haven't actually had a chance to look at yet today. But in response to the fact that districts, once again, needed to be able to do some procurement and get some of these projects done that require the summer timeframe to do, they have changed the process this year. Instead of a capital response letter that covers all of the requests by the district, they've done it in two stages. With the first approval stage letter that has arrived to the district covering off two projects, one being the plumbing upgrades at DW Poppy. The septic field there is starting to fail, and we have a two-year project to do that. So that is phase one of that two-year project that has been approved for us to start work on. The second one is the window upgrades at Peter Ewerd Middle, similar to the projects that we've undertaken at DW Poppy and Brookswood over the last two years. So that is also be phased one of that project. These are generally smaller projects and are usually done in phases. These are the school enhancement projects. Those are the only things that have been approved for the district at this point in time. The second phased letter will be coming in May. And at that time, we will need a board bylaw for all the projects in both phases for us to submit to the ministry to start drawing down on those funds. So with that, I will hand it back to Trustee Ross.
And thank you very much. So I don't have any questions as of yet in the chat. Does anyone have anyone else to comment? Any comments? Not seeing any? Okay, I think to have a mover for the capital response letter, phase one, moved by David Todd, seconded by Shelley Coburn. Thank you very much. And the Board of Education receives the capital plan response letter, stage one, for information as presented. And now can I have the show of hands? All those in favor, please? And I'm just waiting for the screen to show up. And one more time, can I see all those hands? There you are. Okay, it is legitimate, Carrie. Unanimously, thank you very much, trustees. Okay, now on to new business. Boy, they have really moved along here. I'm quite shocked. So I understand that Trustee Marnie Wilson has something to bring up in new business. So go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Sorry, I just had to unmute myself there. And I will apologize if there's any screaming or yelling coming from my living room. Something's going on in the connects game that I don't want to be a spoiler about. It sounds good. Okay, so mine is a notice of motion. It's a notice of motion for the May 25th regular meeting of the board. And whereas the by-election has brought a new trustee to the board, and that trustee should be entitled to a vote on this matter, be it resolved that the Langley Board of Education call for elections for the positions of Chair and Vice Chair as is permitted under the School Act, Section 67-4. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, so this is notice of motion, so it's not debatable. So thank you very much for bringing that, and we look forward to seeing that next month. So while we're coming down to the end of our meeting, so really, it's trustee comments. We have plenty of time for trustee comments tonight. We'll get into question period, and then adjournment, which I'm sure Shelley Coburn will take care of that for us. So go ahead, let's do trustee comments, starting off with trustee David Todd, please.
Thank you. So I did want to let our viewing public out there, hopefully, we're in triple digits, that our trustees were busy this last weekend. And it's one of those magical moments where it's a different world out there. But I just want to let you know that your trustees were working hard this last weekend, and they were zooming into our BCSTA general meeting. And we had actually presented four resolutions. And we were very successful in getting Langley heard at the provincial level on some serious educational issues. And so hats off, if I had a hat, to my colleagues at the wonderful work they did on the weekend and stayed awake and stayed part and took part in great conversations around education issues at the provincial level. So thank you again.
And let's go on to trustee Shelley Coburn, please.
I'm normally a lot closer to the end, so just really threw me off my game there. So thank you. I think three digits. Trustee Todd is just really... You're just really going out there. Let's go for two digits, okay? Let's rake the 12, 13. The first thing I'd like to do this evening is welcome trustee Fox to the table. This would be your first formal, full-length in camera, followed by board meeting extravaganza. It's been a pleasure having you. I enjoyed you at the AGM. You really bring a lot of life and excitement to the party. So welcome. Then I would also like to take a quick minute, and I would like to point out my red dress earrings. And these were made by the lovely Carr Andres. And she is a friend in the Langley School District, but also she's an artist. And the red dress campaign is to bring awareness to murdered and missing Indigenous women. Women do experience violence at the hands of an intimate partner that rates far greater than men, but specifically more so for Aboriginal people. So these earrings were made for me. They're absolutely beautiful. And I recommend, if you would like to get a pair and support the awareness around the red dress campaign, that you can get in touch with myself, and I can help you get in touch with Carr. It's a really wonderful way to bring attention to the issue. And I just think in Langley, we are so lucky that we have this wonderful Aboriginal cultural support and that they share it out with the broader community. So thank you for sharing your gift. And finally, I'd like to end... I think that the delegation tonight is quite timely, given what happened in our community last night, particularly upsetting when something like this happens. And so, especially across the school. And it's impacting a lot of our families. And so I'd really like to extend a special thank you to the frontline workers, the emergency response people that go out every night and risk their lives and their safety to take care of other people. Throughout the pandemic, we've cheered on all sorts of groups. And this is a group that really deserves some appreciation for what they did, and they're still doing today. So thank you very much to our first responders who were there and for the community who's been tremendously generous and is opening up and supporting all those impacted. So I am all done. Thank you very much. I appreciate the 12 people that might be watching. And thank you to the district for all your hard work and to my colleagues at the table. It was a nice weekend with you, and have a good night, everyone.
And I'm just going across the street, so that's why I've chosen the schedule. So Marnie Wilson is up next. But before you come on, Marnie, I just want to say thank you for your leadership on the weekend. You're taking on a role, because I wasn't to be able to be there on the Friday, and you did outstanding. And I was confident in your abilities, and you certainly did deliver. So thank you very much. Go ahead, Marnie, you have some final comments?
Wow, thank you so much, Chair, for your lovely words. That was no problem. Most of what I was going to say has been taken already by other trustees. I wanted to acknowledge that trustee Fox has fit right in and has hit the ground running, which has been great. The AGM, yes, I thought it was a complete success. Langley was definitely on the map and heard from there. I do want to really thank our staff and our parents and the whole education community for pushing through this super stressful and uncertain times. I know that COVID is draining everybody, and I know that we keep saying we thank you. And your patience and perseverance, though, is so appreciated and so recognized. And please just hang in there, and we're going to get through this eventually. And lastly, I'd just like to acknowledge the very important ruling handed down today in the George Floyd case. The work of the Black Lives Matter movement has only just begun, but this victory is a step in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Wilson. And up to Charlie Fox.
Thank you, Chair Ross. And thank you, a real special thank you to my six colleagues on School District trustees. You've been very welcoming. You've been very encouraging. Yes, we did get to spend a lot of time zooming together in the last weekend. I stayed right to the bitter end. I think Suzanne did, too, at the BCSTA Annual Convention. Very informative, very important work done, and important to see the place that our Langley School District has in that organization and how successful we were. So thank you to my colleagues for their welcome and the encouragement they've given me and the workday, the advice they've provided me. And a big special thank you to the staff at the School District. They've been awesome. And I indicated in my campaign, I wanted to hit the ground running, and I think I'm doing that. And I'm enjoying the work that we're doing, moving this district ahead. Thank you for the comments. And the one other comment I would like to acknowledge is, at LSS, we talked about it earlier, some of the improvements and so on that are happening. And friend, good friend Brandon Gabriel is going to be doing some local artists, local Quanlan member, some artwork there, celebrating their new logo and their new name and so on. So I really look forward to that evolving and coming to fruition. So thank you. And thank you to all of you, my colleagues on trustees.
Thank you, trustee Fox. We really do welcome you, and once again. We really do welcome you, and once again, and now on to Suzanne Perot, who's got, I'm sure, some things to comment about the BCSTA conference. She is really becoming a provincial leader, and so go ahead, Suzanne Perot.
Bless your heart and thank you. Yes, of course, I'll always have something to say about that, but first I do want to thank our firefighters for working so hard overnight and our frontline workers. That was a very devastating experience for Willoughby community and for our community restaurants in that area who have also opened themselves up to feed our firefighters. Just extend my great appreciation for them, and thank you for your sacrifices because it's quite significant and the families impacted. I also want to welcome trustee Fox. It's been really wonderful having you join us on the board and hitting the ground running as we've been talking about, and you've done that really well, and you've just come in with such a warm spirit and supportive person. As we went into the BCSTA this weekend, there were some very significant challenges, and some of you know that my motion 15 was really a big deal, not only for me, but more importantly, for our students provincially, and hopefully to create a national shift. And we did really well. We had an hour and a half debate on that, and that was quite profound for a motion to come to the floor and do that. So I think that conversation on seclusion and isolation was really elevated provincially, and that was really exciting. And I want to thank each and every one of my fellow trustees, because it couldn't have been done without each of you and us together, coming together such a strong board collectively and collaboratively, pushing behind each other and encouraging each other on and helping me in the background where I needed it, especially when all my technology went sideways Saturday, I don't know what morning, one morning, one of the mornings it went sideways when we just started. And so I just want to thank each and every one of you. You've been a really strong support to me and to this conversation and giving me the courage and the voice I needed to do to take that forward. Also want to thank LSS for their ongoing work with their capstones, and our students got to have an opportunity to do that as well, and moving towards, students towards those graduation pieces, really fantastic. And one item back to the BCSTA, Marnie, you did a fantastic job leading us. I reached out to you to thank you, but I do want to say it publicly, you did an absolutely fantastic job, leading us, coordinating us, keeping us on track, helping us problem solve, navigating things, simple things like agenda that didn't seem so simple, getting our technology going, approaching with such calmness and patience and navigating those pieces, and it was just really greatly appreciated, especially when it was such a big deal. So I thank you, and I thank our staff for all the good work that we have been tumbling through this last year in COVID as we're getting ready to close up our year and to our public. Thank you and good night.
I appreciate your comments. Okay, thank you. And last, Tony Ward, go ahead, trustee Ward, love to hear from you.
Hello, thanks, everybody. I also want to extend a welcome to trustee Fox, as everybody else has done, and for our good leadership trustee group here for attending when I couldn't attend due to some family matters, the BCSTA. So you guys are obviously stellar in a leadership capacity. Anyhow, congratulations both Suzanne Perot and Marnie Wilson. And just a comment on the day of mourning, so this kind of, this sounds kind of, I mean, it's a kind of a depressing topic, but a very important one. As somebody who worked my other employment, we did have a person who passed away in 2008, and ironically, I was running the donation program for this township of Langley, and I had worked with this guy before, and then I ended up administrating the donation for a bench. But it's a pretty impactful thing, and just to remember, obviously, just encourage people to be safe, and obviously COVID, we want to be safe in light of that, but also just the everyday, day-to-day stuff. And sometimes we think when, you know, if you're in, if you're in a desk job, you may not think of safety in the same, in the same light as somebody who's operating an excavator or somebody operating machinery, but I just always be cognizant of that. We've made some really good leaps forward when it comes to work safety and work safe, obviously, is in charge of that, but I just, it's just something to be mindful of, and hopefully everybody on the 28th can pause for a few moments and reflect. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments, and if I could just finish off, I just want to say that the real superheroes, the modern-day superheroes are in this room and in this district. You know, we're a good district on our way to being a great district, and I just love every day. I mean, gosh, golly, we won the lottery, we live in B.C., now we live in Langley, doesn't it get any better? I mean, I don't think so. This is it. So I just want to say thank you and how proud I am of this district, and now can I have a motion for adjournment, please? Shelley Coburn, thank you very much, and Tony Ward, seconded, thank you very much. Have another.
Good evening.
Question period, don't we have to have story? Like, I would love to adjourn, because now I get to adjourn again. I'm the adjournner, however, I also like process.
All right, if you could just bear with me as I read this out for question period. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. Actually, due to the fact that the public will be using an online platform for this regular board meeting, the process for question period is as follows. The board will not be taking questions to members of the public in real time. We encourage members of the public to please submit their questions by emailing feedback@sd35.vc.ca. Questions will be accepted up to one hour after the adjournment of the meeting. Board members or the appropriate staff will respond to the individual directly to acknowledge they've received the email within 24 hours. Therefore, a response will be provided to the individual thereafter. The purpose is to ensure that those present in the audience have an opportunity to obtain clarification concerning business conducted during the meeting. Prioritively given to responding to one question per person, being considered further questions from any, before considering further questions from any individual. Follow will help the public develop questions for question period at a board meeting that is in keeping with the goal of respectful and focused meeting. Questions one, need to be directed to the chair and not to staff. Two, need to be related directly to the topic on the agenda. Three, need to be succinct, focused, not a statement. Four, may not be asked that are related to personnel or directed at an individual trustee. Five, may not be asked that are related to contract negotiations. And six, the questioner shall provide their name so that it can be reflected in the minutes. All of the above directions are provided in our board policy number seven, Board Operations. The chair may answer, may defer to a staff or indicate a question, may not be in keeping with the above guidelines. Over the page. The board appreciates the public's interest and wants to ensure a professional meeting is conducted with question period focused on providing guests with the clarification they seek. Trustees also welcome questions from members of the public apart from question period. Their contact information is available on the school district website. And so I will call for questions now, and if I could have an adjournment.
I will adjourn.
Thank you. Trustee Shelley Coburn is going to move it and seconded by Suzanne Perot. Okay. I should have got someone else in there, but anyway, anyway, have an otherwise wonderful day, and remember, you're all amazing. Take care.
Good night.
Thank you.
See you guys.